Beginning school year 2013-2014, all Chicago public schools will follow a single academic calendar, doing away with our current two-track schedules. This calendar was created in collaboration with CTU and the final results provide a provides a balance of uninterrupted learning days and reflects input gathered from our stakeholders, which included students, parents, teachers, and principals. We are, and we've said this over and over again, we are one district. We should be one district with one vision, and we want to provide our school community with one calendar that makes sense from what I call from the classroom to the kitchen table. And I think that we have done that. What I was most struck by when I first arrived here was a couple of conversations I had with parents who had children enrolled in Track E and children enrolled in Track R. And a part of what they were saying to me is, you know, my children are in schools at different times. It's really disruptive to our family's schedule, et cetera. So to design a new single-track calendar, we worked with CTU and launched an engagement plan that included a focus, um, included focus groups and online surveys. More than 13,000 parents, students, principals, and teachers responded to the surveys, and their feedback was invaluable to us. The survey told us that 51% of parents and students and 80% of teachers preferred that school begin August. And next year, all schools will start August 26. I must add that sometimes you you seek survey and input, and it's contrary to what your own belief is. So I was in the minority, President Vitale, who would wanted to start after Labor Day, but the data and the community said very clearly to us that that was not their preference. Many stakeholders responded that they desired a fall break or that they desired more time for travel during Thanksgiving. And next year, Thanksgiving will be a three-day holiday, starting with Wednesday, November 27. A joint committee of CPS and CTU officials has been working on the specific parameters of the calendar. And it is my pleasure now to introduce Chicago Public Schools Chief of Instruction, Jennifer Cheetum, and she will elaborate on the details of the committee's recommendations and our stakeholder engagement analysis and the plans for implementation of the new calendar.
Good morning, President Vitale, members of the board. I'm here with our Director of Education Policy and Procedure, Tony Howard, to present to you the proposed unified school calendar for the upcoming school year. As Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett mentioned, we agreed in contract negotiations with the Chicago Teachers Union to establish a joint committee to study and make recommendations for the calendar, eliminating the two-track system that we currently have. The committee included several CPS teachers, along with several central office administrators. In our first meeting together, we reviewed research, we examined information on other district calendars, and we established several principles to guide our work. First and foremost, we wanted to develop a calendar that facilitates and supports high-quality instruction. To that end, we wanted the calendar to balance the need for uninterrupted student learning days with necessary breaks for staff development and vacations. And maybe most importantly, we wanted to engage a variety of stakeholders on the development of the calendar. We knew that we wouldn't be able to make recommendations without input from parents in particular. At this point, I'd like to invite Tony to discuss the engagement process and the recommended calendar that we're proposing as a result of this engagement.
Good morning, President Vitale, Vice President Louise, and members of the board. During our initial meeting with CTU, we also agreed, or we agreed upon, an engagement process, as Dr. Bird Bennett alluded on, that included both an online survey as well as focus groups of parents as well as principals. After completing the engagement process, we met with the joint committee again, along with two parent representatives, one who was invited by CPS and another who was invited by CTU, to examine the data and agree upon a recommended calendar. Each of you should have a copy of the calendar in front of you. And it includes the following key components. As Dr. Bird Bennett stated, classes will begin for all Chicago public school students on the Monday before Labor Day. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving will be a non-attendance day for students to accommodate for travel and provide additional family time. Parent-teacher conferences, formerly called report card pickup days, will be held on the same day for both high school and elementary schools, and will be positioned around a weekend to provide less disruption to classroom instruction. We've repositioned the professional development days so that there will be three days at the beginning of the year to plan and prepare, and one at the end of each quarter for teachers to reflect on student progress and plan instruction for the next quarter. And three days that will be put into a bank of hours to be used flexibly throughout the school year for ongoing staff meetings, teacher collaboration meetings, and professional development sessions. These changes will result in 28 uninterrupted weeks of instruction. In all, we are very excited about the new single calendar. We believe that it is a calendar that will better better serve teachers, students, and their families. And at this point, we are happy to take any questions.
First, I want to congratulate you because I think this is long overdue. I have a couple of questions. Number one, will charter and other schools be on this calendar also?
Charter schools by Illinois state code have the authority to set their own
Okay.
...calendar, so the answer to that question is no. Contract schools will be a part of the unified calendar.
Okay. And the second question, I know that, because this was brought to my attention, and I apologize because I didn't have an opportunity to discuss it in the briefing because I wasn't available, but one of the things that was raised to me by a former colleague is that the PSAE takes place on April 23, and there is no school on April 27 for high schools. The students will be out the whole week before the PSAE. And this might be a disadvantage. I know spring break is sacred, but I don't know what we can do with the PSAE because this is a big disadvantage to high schools. And one of the things I know that that I said in all of those, that time has been held sacred for elementary schools, and I think we need to look at doing the same thing for high school. Because they will, we used to pump our kids up and work to get them ready, and if they going to be gone from the high schools a whole week or so and miss six or seven days before that test, I think they had a disadvantage.
Dr. Hines, we'll double-check, but we did lay up against next next year's assessment calendar
Okay.
...against this to make sure that there weren't any conflicts. So I'm not remembering the dates off the top of my head, but I'll double-check today.
Okay, these were the dates that were sent to me. I don't have the dates on the PSAE
I'll get them.
...either, but a principal told me to take a really good look at the fact that the PSAE would come right after all of these vacation days.
Just a comment. You know, whenever we come up with something uniform like this, we always have to think of flexibility. And I see those three days that are flexible in in times that schools will decide when to do additional staff development. So that's a very good part of this. The other piece that I wanted to mention, having been the principal of a high school that was year-round, we followed the traditional calendar because we had our seven weeks of summer where students will gain additional credits. And hopefully, other schools that want to do this with their own discretionary monies and have summer school, not only that's remedial, but it's also advanced, or for everyone will be able to do this.
Other questions? Tony, thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, thank you very much.
A guiding principle of the Chicago Public Schools is that we understand the importance of leadership, that we support our leaders, and that we hold them accountable for success. The role of a principal, the leader of the school, is one of the most important levers of change in supporting teacher and students. As a district, we want to support and reward our school leaders based on both professional practice and student outcomes. To that end, we recently announced our new comprehensive principal evaluation system that not only aligns with our new teacher evaluation initiative REACH, but also completes the chain of accountability. The new principal evaluation system reflects two important indicators: principal practice, or how principals do what they do, and student growth, or what principals and how schools accomplish what they need to accomplish for our students. For the first time ever, we are addressing principal quality and the probability of success and effectiveness of all principals in the district. This chain of accountability is being implemented throughout all levels of the Chicago Public Schools in support of student outcomes with teachers, principals, and CPS leadership. For the first time ever, all those responsible for supporting and boosting student growth will be evaluated by common standards and held accountable for the work that they do. As the board will recall, I once remarked that the only people in the system accountable were the CEO and the teachers through the new REACH system. So now, we are moving to hold everyone accountable to high standards. These standards, again, believe begin with me, the CEO, and are carried throughout the district with all of our principals and teachers. Our new principal evaluation system will support principals in their professional development to help them to learn to be even more successful, and will help our teachers to become successful in the classrooms. It's my pleasure right now to introduce the Chief Talent Officer, Alicia Winkler, who will present the further details of our principal evaluations plan.
Thank you, Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett. Good morning, members of the board, and our diverse stakeholders present here via TV and in the room. I'm incredibly proud to talk to you today about the approach we're taking to principal quality and effectiveness. Very specifically, we are not addressing this as a single initiative, or a project, or a piece of a solution. We are instead, as Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett pointed out, addressing this in a comprehensive manner. Although the focus of our dialogue today is on principal evaluation, and before you for your consideration is a principal evaluation plan, I do want to highlight that this is in the context of a broad set of initiatives that we're doing to comprehensively support and address the development, preparation, guidance, evaluation, and eventually compensation of our principals. Very specifically, our goal is to ensure that there is an effective, high-quality principal in 100% of CPS schools by school year 2014-15. In order to do so, we are taking five deliberate and significant steps. From left to right, we are preparing our pipeline of new leaders coming into the system. We are growing our incumbent assistant principals to prepare and support them for their principalship opportunity, to develop and grow in their career. We are cultivating and attracting highly talented applicants for school leadership positions at CPS, and we have 75 current, active residents and interns preparing to become principals for this very next fall within the system today. And we've already begun our recruiting cycle for the following year. Second, we are addressing and improving the rigor within our principal eligibility and selection process. Very specifically here, we are implementing a family and community engagement component in our eligibility or selection process, which we anticipate to be very robust and really present as a typical day in the life feels in being a principal. We want our candidates to experience the natural stressors of what it's like to be a principal: having the knock on the door with a disruption down the hallway, a parent who's concerned about their student and wants to speak with the leader immediately, a local school council meeting for which they're preparing, a call coming in from the local school council president. All of these things are natural day-in-the-life occurrences for principals. We want to ensure that our selection process mirrors that, that we see the rigor within it, and that it better prepares and mirrors a day in the life and ensures a probability of success in selecting our future leaders. Third, we have a focus on leadership development and training. We are investing with limited resources, we are investing in our principal development. We are addressing this by focusing not only on our newest principals coming in and ensuring they understand the basic fundamentals of how to be successful in the role, the watch-outs and the be sure-tos, but we're also focusing on 100 of our incumbent principals who are on the rise, providing them support and guidance to ensure that they can continue to grow themselves and for their school. Principal evaluation I'll focus on in just a minute, but last and not least, we are linking everything we're doing to how we will incent, motivate, and reward behavior and performance of our principals. So we're looking at how our bonus system, our achievement awards, financial and non-financial link up with how we evaluate performance and how we grow our students. And there's a consistent thread that will fall through all of these areas of focus, these systems and infrastructure and process. There are six competencies that we believe fundamentally differentiate our most effective school leaders from our less effective. When we see excellence in our school leaders, we see leaders who champion teacher and staff excellence through a focus on continuous improvement. They create powerful professional learning systems, they build a culture focused on college and career readiness, preparing our students for college, career, and life. They empower and motivate families and communities to become engaged. They relentlessly pursue self-discipline, thinking, and action. They're always looking for what can they do better differently, how do their actions impact and grow in their schools? And finally, they connect their school vision to high expectations for all students and all of the actions that they take. With the focus of evaluation, I want to highlight a few things related to our principal evaluation plan. First, you'll see a lot of intentional commonality here between our teacher evaluation system and our principal evaluation system. The same act, the Performance Evaluation Reform Act, PARA for short, passed in January 2010 at the Illinois State Legislature, compels us to implement a performance evaluation system, not only for our teachers but for our school leaders as well, that is inclusive of student outcomes. Further, it specifies that those outcomes must be at least 25% of the total evaluation this year, and at least 30% of the total evaluation next year, while it also requires of us to acknowledge in the waiting very specifically and explicitly at least 50% of our total evaluation based on principal practice. There was a group formed shortly after PARA was passed that was called the Illinois Performance Evaluation Advisory Council, PIAC for short. This group was comprised of primary education and secondary education experts. It was comprised of early childhood experts. It had labor and non-labor representatives. It had city of Chicago and districts across the state represented. And that group collectively reviewed a ton of evidence around what it takes to be successful in the principalship, and made some very comprehensive recommendations on what we should be looking for in that principal practice. We are recommending the adoption, nearly whole-scale, of their recommendations on the principal practice. And we've tied and linked those things to be looking for and that required evidence to our CPS principal competencies with which our CPS principals helped develop and create just last spring. So we've linked those two things, we've tied them together, and that is what we're proposing on the principal practice side. Over 100 school leaders have been engaged with us in responding, providing feedback, looking at what we're proposing, asking questions, and we're still in that process, actually finalizing specifically with a few of our schools that have unique grade configurations, how we best comprehensively measure in an evaluation system. But we're excited to be talking about this now because this is a plan that we expect to launch this school year. The design of the evaluation system is comprised of two main parts. One is principal practice, 50%, that's based on the day-to-day activities that a principal leads through. It's their continuous improvement work plan. It's their safety drills. It's all the things they're doing to grow teachers, who are growing our students. It's their support for REACH. It's their observations, not just are they getting them done on time, but are they the quality that we want to see? Are they providing teachers with that constructive feedback to take the next step to grow in their practice? On the results side of the equation, we have looked at and proposed multiple measures to measure student growth and results. We've looked at leading indicators and lagging indicators, those things that tell us the school is trending right and on the right track, and those those statistics that tell us whether or not the school has arrived where we want them to. Have they achieved? Have they accomplished their goals? We want to ensure that our students in highest needs, our diverse learners, special education students, English language learners, that tho- those students receive priority in our evaluation process. And so we're being explicit about including their results and bringing a focus to that. And last but not least, we're including a balanced scorecard way of measuring our high school achievement, combining into one metric graduation rate, dropout rate, and attendance. So that by moving one lever alone, it doesn't tell us whether or not we achieved, it's having all three of those metrics moving together in the right direction with significant gross growth that has told us we've achieved. This process is being implemented this year. We are finalizing the details of the waiting structure, and as I stated earlier, some of the unique school grade configurations, how we will assess in those instances. We are actively discussing with our chiefs. Our chiefs are participating in online training, much like the principals have for teacher evaluation. We have face-to-face leadership development sessions with our chiefs and deputies, actually planned for this weekend. And our chiefs and deputies will be talking in more detail with our principals over the course of the next week to 10 days, inclusive of a CPAA conference, where we expect to hold breakout sessions on this plan. Chiefs will be doing a minimum of two formal observations with each principal this year, and then an additional summative evaluation feedback session at the end of the year. And we intend to have a calibration session with leaders in between the first and second observation, an opportunity for chiefs to come together and ensure that they're implementing with rigor based on the evidence they see in a reliable way coming to an objective assessment of an evaluation and rating. Finally, we would like to highlight that for the first time, we will be providing every single school with individual targets with which we expect them to achieve. These targets will be set on the basis of where their students enter the year and where, therefore, we would expect them to grow by the end of the year. These targets will be sent against national benchmarks, and that's a first for CPS, is to set these against national benchmarks. We're talking about testing done at the beginning of the year, testing done at the end of the year, and what does that growth for that specific set of students in that school look like? What is optimal growth? What is average growth? And what is less-than-optimal growth? So we're excited about a comprehensive evaluation system that is aligned between our teacher evaluation system, our principal evaluation system, that is part of a much broader context in servicing, supporting, and developing the continuum for our principals from recruiting, sourcing, selecting, developing, evaluating, and compensating. And last but not least, that this is part of a much bigger process to ensure accountability for the entire district, starting with the CEO, as she pointed out, and teachers, moving to principals. Next, it will be chiefs and cabinet members, then all of central office, and finally, all of the rest of the staff within the school. So that every single person understands how they connect and engage in accomplishing the goals for the district. With that, I thank you and open for questions.
Thank you, Alicia. Questions?
Yeah, I just I just had a comment. You know, having been a principal, my own definition is being an instructional and a family and community activist, you know, to get better results. Even though instructional leadership is at the forefront and student growth, there are other aspects of management and interpersonal effectiveness that have to be defined within the competencies, so that we're able to connect those to instructional leadership. But my question has to do, and you mentioned at the end, an accountability system to support schools and to support principals from central office as well as the networks, so that this accountability systems, so that we hold principals accountable, we're able to deliver when they need that level of support, follow-up, either from central office or, and that needs to be in place to really have an integrated process. Is that something that is going to be worked on?
Yeah, this is the the principal evaluation system and accountability system is the second of the of a multi-step process. We started with teachers, we now have principals. Alicia doesn't know it yet, she's wrapped up just about with principals, and now we're looking at our, as she said, our central office staff, and then other members of the school community. I would also add under the competencies, not only instructional leadership and community activists, but we're really looking at, our principals run huge enterprises, many of them, and they also, we're also looking at the managerial aspects. How does one manage a business, quite frankly, and an enterprise, in addition to the instructional leadership and all of the other components that you that you mentioned, Carla?
Thank you. Other questions?
I want to make a comment first, and just thank you, Alicia, and your team for what I think is a great job and something that's much needed. I want to thank you personally for spending the amount of time you spent with me to make sure I wouldn't have 20 questions today. And or comments. I'm not sure if that was for you or for me. Probably for both. Yeah, no, I don't have 20. See, I just got one or two today, and mainly good comments. I think that the training that you had already explained to me is fabulous. I want to know what will we have in place for the people who aren't in that training, especially about this evaluation system, because there'll be, I see where there'll be meetings, but I'm talking about really training principals who really don't know what some of these components look like. What does it really look like?
So I'll start, and I know Barbara will supplement. The, very specifically, we we have to layer this into and integrate it in all of what we're doing to develop our leaders. So the leadership development work that I referenced here outside of the principal evaluation, if you will, rollout plan, certainly with our rising principals, we're going to spend time with 100 rising principals that we have in eight different Saturday sessions where they're part of an active leadership development group, an aspiring principal group. Those folks are going to spend direct time talking about evaluation and the evidence and the different reporting, the required evidence and the optional evidence of how they how they can collaborate and both and consolidate all of that evidence into a summary of how they're doing and measuring their own progress. So I think that's a major one. I'll let Barbara supplement as well.
Yeah, the second one, Dr. Hines, is that this is an ongoing part of the work of a chief.
Okay.
So their regular meetings, and Denise Little and Alicia and I are working on this, a part of the chief's ongoing responsibility is to develop and to continue to support and develop those principals. So it's an ongoing process, not, you know, not the one-shot deal from the central office or eight sessions on Saturday, but ongoing ongoing work, and a part of which the chiefs will, that's a part of their accountability system. Are you doing that work with principals?
Okay. And the second one, I don't care what our president will say. No, the second one, Alicia, you and I talked about, and I don't know if you got any information on this. I'm very happy to see the schools receive individual targets, but I talked to you about schools like who have very high mobility rates.
Right.
How can they be measured the same? You know, if if the mobility rate is has been there for three to five years, and you got a principal two years, and then they're measured the same as a school who doesn't have that?
So I don't have a complete answer yet to the question. We're still working on that, but I have one important piece of the answer to the question, and that is, historically, in our school accountability framework, known more commonly as our performance policy, it was a one snapshot, one test time at one point during the year. This is at least two. So this is at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, which will partially address the mobility, because you will be looking at those students whose growth for which you had beginning of year and end of year within the same school. I don't think that's the complete answer to your question, though.
And Dr. Hines, LA, my colleagues in LA and in New York are struggling with the same, I heard it, New York, right?
Oh, you're right.
They're struggling with the same kinds of mobility rates and how they calibrate student mobility against principal performance, teacher performance, et cetera. So we are also collaborating with them in terms of learning and seeing what's applicable for us, not in a template, but how could we modify it for Chicago?
Yeah, because I Yeah, because I talked to her about looking at that population and maybe weighting something with those students.
And I suspect that this will connect to the evaluation system that local school councils have to do as you go to the next step, so it's integrated.
Very important. Thank you, Board Member Esquicia. We actually met with the local school council advisory board last week, and they have asked us to please help take a look at their evaluation system and how it aligns and compares with what we're introducing here, in addition to providing feedback on what we're introducing here. So we're really excited about joining that work. It will likely take us just a little bit of time to get there, but we would anticipate this is step one, introducing a new comprehensive evaluation system for chiefs. We'll focus on now the alignment and progress and how we move forward for the LSE evaluation as well.
Thank you. Camilla?
Would these evaluations be uniform between types of schools or grade levels of schools?
Thank you very much for the question, Camilla. It will be largely reliable, so the majority of our schools will be on the exact same system. But similar to teacher evaluation, where we have teachers in tested subjects and grades and teachers in non-tested subjects and grades, we do need to explore for some of our unique school settings. For example, 10 of our schools who have a grade level continuum of only K3, how we appropriately assess and evaluate in those cases where the same data simply isn't available today. Thanks.
President, Board Members, this concludes my report to the Board.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Barbara. And I want to thank all of the management for their presentations today. I appreciate that. Quickly, announcements. I want to remind everybody again that the Board now offers office hours monthly, so you don't necessarily have to come to this meeting to meet with Board members. And if you care to meet with Board members, please call our office at 773-553-1600 and request an office hours meeting. I would also point out that this month, we transformed, transitioned fully to our advanced registration system. I think that's correct, Estella?
Yes, Mr. President.
And hopefully, all have found it to be a more user-friendly way of coming before us.
Thank you. And I'd like to note, Mr. President, that for this meeting and moving forward, advanced registration will be available the week prior to the scheduled Board meeting. For the February meeting, advanced registration will start at 8:00 AM on February 18, 2013, and will close on February 22, 2013 at 5:00 PM, or when the sixth seat slots fill, whichever is first. If anyone has any questions about this process, please contact the Board Office for our assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with two hours of public participation. And this morning, now afternoon, as I look at the clock, we have the privilege of having two aldermen with us today who would like to speak to us. And if Alderman Fioretti wouldn't mind, I'd like to do ladies first. Alderman Graham, I understand, is here and would like to make a few comments. She's -- Alderman Graham is going to go first. She's right behind you.
I was looking for her.
I'm going to let ladies go first.
Thank you, Barbara Bird Bennett, for the presentation on this morning. My heart leaped at -- leaped at a lot of the things that you had to add regarding the school closings. And a lot of the presentation is a lot of what the CACs have been talking about. One of the big concerns, and I heard it raised here, was quality schools sending our children to -- should a school have to close? That has been the problem. I think that is where the turmoil hit, when our children were not allowed to go to another quality school. If our schools were bad, why were we sending them to another bad school? So we appreciate that issue being raised here, and the concerns are being heard from our community. The other thing that is being discussed quite a bit in the CACs are the effects of charter schools on CPS schools. I'm not anti-charter, but the concerns of my community is that CPS schools are not able to go door-to-door to promote the school, saying, "Come to our schools." But charter schools are allowed to go door-to-door and say, "Hey, this is a great school down the street." So we do feel like the impact of our children being influenced to go to the charter schools is an impact on how the school utilization plan is rolling out. So, again, I say I'm not anti-charter, but the concerns are there, that how can we continue to allow our schools, our children, to be taken to the other schools, and then the school evidently, you know, is impacted later by being threatened with a school closure? I am also happy to hear that you guys won't be closing some of the schools that have made tremendous progress. We've had Ms. Gurley with us for so long in the Austin area, and we're so proud of her, the leadership that she has given us, and I'm proud to see she's been elevated. Her expertise has actually led a number of our schools off of Level III to move us down. And so, I'm really happy that you guys have taken into consideration not to close some of the schools who are making some gains in moving our children along. That was one of my biggest fears, and I tried to work with CPS on some of the changes that you guys are making. And I really was going to be upset to be a train coming in your direction about closing our schools, who are working so hard to move our children forward. So I appreciate the number of reports that have been given here today. And our principals need you guys' support. They're working really hard. They're having several challenges. Social workers need to be added to our schools in a big way, because we face many challenges. I did not, and I'm sure that it's probably on your hearts and minds, hear about how you handle the homeless population in the schools. It is a very big need. It has been said that our homeless is invisible, and I don't think I've heard it uttered one time during this Board meeting about how we handle families that face a real challenge in our communities, who want a quality of life, want a quality education, and want a way out of the situations that they're in. So I would like to hear more about how we're going to handle those students, mental health students, and a number of other issues that our children are so much in desperate need of. And I don't think I've heard those words uttered here this morning. So I would urge the Board to please put those on, those students and families who have to deal with these challenges on your radar, and raise them to the status that they need of importance, because these are our children who later have a strong impact on our community at later dates in times. So I would like to encourage you to move forward in embracing more policies that support, not isolate, not set aside, not shame, and not put them in some category that doesn't promote healthy families in a good light. And I'm choosing my words, because my family has dealt with a number of these issues, and I want to be an example for them this morning. And ask you to please put them on your radar. Thank you guys so much for your reports.
Thank you, Alderman. Appreciate your comments.
Can I tell you one thing?
Yes. Alderman? Alderman?
One of the things you said is that we're at a disadvantage, the neighborhood schools, because charters can go door-to-door.
Yes, ma'am.
I would encourage you, and maybe some kind of way the Board can help, you can market your school. You don't have to go door-to-door. If you bring the parents in and you have a marketing plan, I've seen it done with some of our great principals like Janice Jackson and I can't think of the gentleman on the West Side with the elementary school. You don't always have to go to them if you bring them in to see what you're doing. It's the same kind of recruitment process.
Well, I agree with you, but I don't think that our principals have been encouraged. It's like an invisible line. If I step out too far, I'm going to be reined in. And so, I think that they want to be good principals. They want to be good community representatives, but they don't want to cross the board as well. So they want to market their schools, and they try to in the way that they do. They're very inviting to the communities, and when we go, and we've talked to several principals, I've surveyed the schools, and we have great buildings in the 29th Ward in the Austin area, and we have a lot of schools that need a lot of help. And I've talked, and I've worked with my principals over the last two years, and I know their passion, because I've seen it. I've seen them tell me about what they want for the children and how they fear for the safety of their children, and they fear that one day their doors will be closed and their hard work will be for nothing. So in an effort to stand unified with my community and with my principals, that is a fear. And they would like to market their schools, and I'm going to help them. But I also don't want the backlash of a misunderstanding, because we're easily misunderstood. Sometimes, we do some things and they can be taken out of context. And so, thank you for that suggestion this morning.
Barbara?
Yes, Alderman. Denise Little, who is our chief for the networks, she and I have already had conversations about how we better market our neighborhood schools. And so, I'm going to ask if Denise might just talk with you at the end so that we can get together to really have a thoughtful and integrated conversation around that process.
Sure.
Thank you again.
Just one quick thing. When I used to chair the State Board of Education, unfortunately, we got a lot of complaints from school districts, not Chicago, but a number of school districts that didn't give the students who were homeless the rights that they're entitled to under the McKinney-Vento Act, which protects the federal laws passed to protect those student populations. But I also hear you that there's other things that they need, other than the right to enroll at a school when they show up and they don't have an address. And we hear you, and we will be cognizant of all the social and emotional supports that they need to also be successful in school.
Mr. President, and Alderman, we want quality options in every neighborhood, but you've heard our CEO mention about an accountability system that would be applicable to everyone. And I think many times, we have to monitor recruitment, intake, transfers, and serving all populations, because we all have that public responsibility. So as a Board member, you know, we'll be taking a look at that and working with our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, the CEO, her administrative staff and administrators. First of all, I do want to comment on my colleague's comments, because I think in the Second Ward, we see that throughout from the lakefront all the way to the far West Side. And many of the items that she brought up, we made recommendations to the panel when it was before the JLM Center on the West Side. And dealing with the 20,000 or so homeless people that we have and that are students in 190-some languages, sometimes is almost insurmountable, but it's a way that we need to not be forgotten for all those that come from elsewhere, and we must look out for them. And I commend my colleague for raising those issues here today. I'm here to address the issue of Jones. You know, it is clear from the people that I've heard from in the South Loop, West Loop, Chinatown, Bronzeville, that they and the families that are served in those areas, that we need a high-quality neighborhood high school, you know? And it shouldn't even be an issue for debate. A good, quality neighborhood school is a fundamental right of the taxpayers of this city, and not just in that neighborhood or those neighborhoods, but throughout the city of Chicago. You know, the current Jones Prep Magnet School will soon move into a new building. And yesterday, we heard that the old Jones Building will become an expansion of the current Magnet School with only a few hundred seats available to the neighborhood school. I'm pleased that Mayor Manuel and CPS, under pressure from the community, adjusted their plans and stated that the land would not be sold off and the building torn down. But I am disappointed that CPS still has no plans to create a neighborhood school to serve this area, something that the residents desperately need, and this is unacceptable. Over the previous 15 years, Central Chicago has seen an exponential growth in the population of families with children. And but what we're seeing from time and time again, when these children reach a certain age, more than 40% of the families are moving out of the city, most likely in search of better educational opportunities. What an incredible economic loss to the city of Chicago. But CPS can stem this loss. Work with us to create a neighborhood high school in this community and other communities. Work with us to keep the families in Chicago, both as vital members of our communities and taxpayers. I also urge CPS with some caution here, because you must be more transparent and more open about your decision-making process with respect to this issue. We need more community input, and all the families in these communities deserve to know what's going on. Their futures depend upon this decision. My message today, both to the Board, help keep thousands of middle-class families here in this city. Don't push them out to the suburbs or elsewhere. Create neighborhood schools that serve not only the central city, but throughout the city. People believe in this city. People believe in quality neighborhood schools. People believe in the mission of CPS, but their future is dependent. I've heard the words "choice" and "options" yesterday and today, but there is only one choice. There is only one option: safe, high-quality neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll proceed with public participation, and I'll proceed by calling the first speaker, Speaker number one, Sarah Baker, followed by Speaker number two. Just to note for the record, Doug Sutton will not address the Board today, as well as Speaker number nine, Chris Smith. He will not address the Board today, followed by Speaker number 18, Patrick Love, and then Speaker number 20, Donna Jones. And then designated Speaker number 22, Kyle Terry, will speak on behalf of the Orange Charter School, followed by Speakers numbers 16 and 27, please, Anton Seals and Ann Browns with the Illinois Network of Charter Schools. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Hunko Baker, last name B-A-K-E-R, and I am the principal and co-founder of Foundations College Prep. I first want to thank CEO Bird Bennett and her team for recommending our application for approval. A few of our community supporters, including Ted Williams and Donna Jones, had prepared to speak but had to leave for obligations in the community, so they are here in spirit with me today, as well as many of our supporters who are in the House today. Our vision is to become the highest-performing open enrollment high school in the city of Chicago, one that serves students in grades six through 12, so they can build the academic and socio-emotional foundations they need to succeed in college, career, and life. To achieve this ambitious goal, our school model reimagines the use of time, talent, and technology. And at its core, it means we use the schedule and technology to extend the reach of our very talented teachers, teachers who are committed to making a difference in places like Roseland-Pulman. In Roseland, for every 100 ninth graders entering neighborhood high schools, over half will drop out, and only two will graduate college-ready. Over the last two years, we have met many community leaders, students, and families who desperately want and need a college prep option in their community, and we've built very strong relationships with them. Families of 100 children have expressed interest to enroll, and over 40 teachers have expressed interest in teaching with us, several from the far South Area. Specifically, we have the support of community leaders and change agents, including State Representative Will Davis, Joyce Chapman.
Excuse me, Ms. Baker. Can you please conclude?
President of Pulman CDC, Chris Smith, Neighborhood Housing Services, Dave Doig, Chicago Neighborhood Initiatives, Jenny Benton of Roseland-Pulman Kensington Human Relations Council, longtime community advocate, Robie Larkin, Pastor Henry of M3 Baptist Church, Lily Baptist Church, the leaders of Demoiselle Tufim, among many others. With our team's strong track record of driving student achievement, our thoughtful and imaginative use of resources, and the strong community support we've garnered, we know we will build a school deserving of our students, a school that ensures every student will thrive in college and life. We ask you to approve our application, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question. On that list of community people, do you, have you spoken to either of the aldermen down there yet, and where are they on this proposal?
We are currently finalizing our support from aldermen.
Okay. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear when you started. Who are you in connection to the school?
I am principal and co-founder.
Okay, thank you. And also, your Board, how, where are you in the status of your Board?
We did have a Board member here today, and we have our Board Chair, Kristen Vander Walker, who's here, and we are, we're really proud of the Board that we have. We also know that it's an area of growth for us to continue to build our Board, and we're working on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 18, Patrick Love, followed by Speaker number 20, Donna Jones. Last call for Speaker number 18, Patrick Love. Moving on to last call for Speaker number 20, Donna Jones. Moving on to the next speaker, please. Speaker number 22, Kyle Terry for Orange Charter School.
Hello. My name is Kyle Terry. I'm a Board member with the Orange School. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I wish to thank you for your diligence in investing in the Orange School's proposal. In addition to CPS's vetted process, we have met with the Board members Asquithia and Zap and Dr. Bird Bennett. We respect and appreciate how thorough you must be. The Office of New Schools Endorsement requires an incredibly high standard, much higher, as Ms. Zap has pointed out, than it has been in years past. We understand CPS's priorities to develop high-quality, low-sopher learning, which we hope to become. We wish to be clear in stating we have no desire to replace, negate, or combat traditional schools, but instead to serve as a model for innovative education. We engage the whole community, including fostering partnerships with traditional schools to better educate each child. The Orange School, designed as an institution that uses an arts-based curriculum, seeks the Board of Education's authorization in creating a dynamic institution where veteran teachers, associate teachers, and local teaching artists share time and information during adaptive school day with a level of rigor and engagement in line with CPS's standards. Our Board is fortified with school designers and builders, experienced arts education integrators, lifelong artists and community activists, and of course, innovative educators on par with the best any high-quality school has to offer. To put it plainly, we are thorough and adaptable, but still rooted in our unique vision that builds lifelong learners. As a CPS elementary school product, myself and a working artist, I am living proof of how the arts and unique education can develop character that might otherwise fall through the cracks. We wish to provide the same for the next generation of students by giving them Chicago's rich history and culture through our dedicated teachers and collaborating arts partners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your coming down.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. President, then, will be Speaker number 16, Anton Seals, followed by Speaker number 27, Ann Brown, and then I would ask that Speaker number 17, Davida Williams follow, and then Speaker number 59, please, Andre Johnson, followed by Speaker number three, Patricia Porter, then Speaker number four, Shatil Jones, and Speaker number six, Glenda Pettigrew, please.
Good morning. Anton Seals with Illinois Network of Charter Schools. With two charter schools up for approval today, INX is encouraged by the continued support to offer Chicago students with more high-quality educational options. We do support the two schools that are up for approval today, which is Foundations and Orange. They both reflect an innovation that the district seeks and that high quality that the district seeks as well. We do urge and continue to support high-performing schools. Orange and Foundations can also fill those roles. These two schools participated in INX Charter Starter Program, a selected program for teams and organizations looking to start schools. Both have leadership teams that are deep knowledge, that have deep knowledge of charter school operations and a track record for high-quality instruction as well. Foundations, for example, will reimagine how teachers hone their craft, offering students the best from master teachers and resident teachers by integrating technology to help support the mastery of basic skills while allowing teachers to focus instructional time on building critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Orange, as you just heard, their model seeks to use the arts as a key lever to improve student achievement and set students on the course to college. The opportunity to offer arts education to Chicago students is vital to continue the tradition of thought-provoking and inspiring artistry and craftsmanship that our great city reflects, which also aligns with the district's desire to increase the arts-based education, as we heard earlier. We understand that the decision the Board will render today is not easy, but we do ask that you consider both of these schools that will, can, and will bring communities that they serve a high-quality and optimal option. So we ask that you approve these schools today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seals.
I'm Ann Levy Brown, also from INX, and I'll let Anton's statement speak for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, then, please, Davida Williams, followed by Speaker number 59, Andre Johnson.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Davida Williams, and I live in the Auburn-Gresham community, and I am the parent of three CPS students, one in a traditional high school, one in a charter high school, and my youngest, who is in eighth grade, is in a magnet school. I've been here before, and I'm here again today because I am a parent leader with New Schools for Chicago, and I know quality public education is vital, and I believe all Chicago families deserve the dignity of school choice. And I am here today to ask you to approve new quality charter schools seeking to open in communities of need. You must preserve and expand school choice. Today, about 50,000 CPS students attend charter schools. There are 26,000 CPS students in magnet schools, 21,000 in selective enrollment schools, and at least another 23,000 in military performance, career academies, contract, and other schools of choice, according to the CPS website. Add to that the 19,000 students on waiting lists for charter schools and something like 35,000 who applied for magnet schools and selective schools last year but didn't get in. That's 174,000 students, 174,000. I'm here today on behalf of these students and their families. We are, we are the blossoming school choice movement in our city. Our movement is here to stay. We may not be the kind of people who march in the streets, but we are voting with our feet. Thousands of families were at the New Schools Expo recently, looking for schools of choice, looking to change their children's future. They joined our movement because they know it is too important to keep quiet and let others decide our children's fate. The problem is, the problem is there are not enough schools for every family trying to get into one. We need additional schools with high quality, real discipline, nurturing teachers, and a track record of results.
Ms. Williams, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
And please, listen to the thundering sound of more than 175,000 pair of feet voting for school choice and their parents. We must preserve and expand school choice for my eighth grader and those just like her.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.